Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of September 26, 2012, regular session. Everyone is here, Linda, except Dr. Quick, the last minute was unable to attend. Thank you. Welcome to everybody. Good to see you again. And we'll start with the approval of items by consensus with Superintendent Benton.
Good evening, everyone. There are five items on the consent agenda, including approval of the minutes of September 12 regular session, approval of the minutes of September 12 executive session not for release, payroll 9/12/12 sped warrant, sped 01 and CB 01 warrants, CF 3, G 4 01, and R 2 04 warrants.
Thank you. All right. I entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of September 12 regular session, executive session not for release. This is Burns.
I make a motion to approve minutes of September 12 regular session, September 12 executive session as stated.
Do we have a second? Mrs. Carroll, thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda? I entertain a motion for approval of payroll warrant, 9/12/12. Mrs. Bonnash.
I make a motion to approve the payroll warrant for 9/12/12.
Do we have a second? Oh, we have to go this way. Mr. Mullis, second. Thank you. All those in favor? Four in favor, two abstain, Mrs. Carroll and Mrs. Kane. Thank you, Linda. And I would entertain a motion for approval of warrants for sped 01, CB 01, CF 3, G 4 01, and R 2 04. Do we have a motion?
I'm scared to make the motion, but I will make the motion. I make a motion that we approve warrants sped 01, CB 01, CF 3, G 4 01, and R 2 04.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second, Mrs. Bonnash. All those in favor? Okay, one, two, three, four, five in favor, one abstain, Mrs. Burns. Thank you, Linda. Thank you, everybody. Next item of business is the school committee. Oh, we're starting, we definitely, this is the beginning of the new year when we have our school committee representatives, we almost feel a little bit lost without them. So we're so happy to see our new representatives, and Mrs. Benton will introduce them.
Sorry, I left that off the agenda. We have four students from the high school who will be reps for the school committee, and two of them are here this evening. Shannon Wilcock, class of 2014, and Jessica Casparian, who's going to be the spokesperson for the group this evening, class of 2014. Welcome to both of you. Thank you for volunteering your time.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On October 1st, the high school have its Ice Cream Social. This is an event in which clubs at the high school have a booth to represent their club, tell what it is and why people should join their club. This is mainly for freshmen, and clubs are currently preparing for it. As most people know, sports at the high school are a very big deal. All fall sports have started, and everything is running smoothly. Each team is practicing very hard and excited for the remainder of their season. Lamp Lighters Drama Guild, the drama club at the high school, just had auditions for its upcoming play Julius Caesar. The auditions went very well, and the cast list is now up. The dates for the show will be November 29, 30, and December 1st. Also, the high school will have Spirit Week, October 9 through 12. Later that week, Wilmington High School will be hosting its annual homecoming dance on Saturday, October 13. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Any questions? Jessica, the way we work, this is, we don't make you stay. So that once you've given your report, unless it's something that's on the agenda that affects the high school that you might like to put in, have input, and you're totally welcome to stay anytime, but we don't expect that you have to stay.
Okay, thank you.
And Shannon, same, they'd be the same rules, okay?
Thank you.
So thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Our next item of business will be the superintendent's report.
We have four items under the superintendent's report. The first one is the personnel report. We had a .4 phys ed teacher leave the middle school, and she got an offer of a full-time job. Boston School started a week after we did, and she ended up getting a job and felt badly and didn't want to disrupt, but she was not even making a fair wage at .4. We're fortunate enough that Principal McMiniman found Robert Waite to fill her place. That's personnel report. This evening, we have both the middle school and high school class size reports. Last meeting, you saw the elementary class size reports, and I invite Principal McMiniman and Principal Tracy, why don't you both come up to the, we can move the other tier over to the table. This document is important in two respects. It shows you what the class sizes are, that that's contractually. In the contract, I set minimums and maximums, so to speak, and I think you will find that you have very nicely supported low class sizes in the middle school and high school this year. It'll also be used in the process of our budgeting for 2014 when we figure out staffing. I will be looking at this closely because we really do have some really small class sizes, and I have a feeling that our budget this year is not going to be as easy as last year. So I will be making a recommendation in December around a number of teachers at each level. Start with the middle school. Christine, if you want to highlight anything, or are you pleased with it?
I'm certainly pleased, and I think that, as you mentioned, many of the class sizes are quite workable, especially for middle school age students, 10 to 14, who tend to have lots of energy and certainly need multi-modes for learning. So usually, when we say that that class size is about 18 to 22, on the average, believe it or not, even in our hiring process over the spring and the summer, it's actually quite attractive to candidates who are perhaps coming from other districts that might be 25 to 30, or 28 to 31. And so it's quite interesting when I say the general class size in the core subject areas, some of the new applicants sort of say, wow. And so it is attractive to candidates coming on board, and it certainly is attractive to the teachers who are maintaining the classrooms and covering the curriculum and doing interactive instructional practices. It is quite helpful to keep them at that size. But I can tell you that, you can see that some of the popular programs, it's quite an honor, I guess you could say, to say that, you know, over a third of our school participates in a performing arts program. And we have a number of students who have elected the various foreign languages, and it's been successful in the addition of the Italian. So we've been very fortunate with the things that we've been able to offer, the subjects that we've been able to offer at the earlier grades at the middle school, and we're proud of the report.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, Mrs. Bonnash?
I just noticed that there were a couple of numbers that didn't look right. I don't know if you'll go over this again, but-
Sure.
The phys ed, the average was 29.8, and that doesn't look right. So, because all the numbers are under 27.
Right.
So I think it was just a mathematical error.
It might be a formulaic piece right there in the Excel spreadsheet, so we can definitely take a look at that.
And there was another one, same thing.
Yeah, that's right.
I think there was one wrong in the French. I believe there was an incorrect class size average, and that was because there are only four sections of French, six, two seventh, and the eighth. And I think it said the average class size was 31, and that was absolutely incorrect. We're not running class sizes of 31. So that was about 23.3.
Also art, the average class size is 27, and again, there's nothing-
Everything is under?
Yeah.
Okay. That might have been, when we were comparing, we did this on the total whole of 891 students, and so I will have to go back and check that formula to make sure that we're accurate. Because we do really work to preserve that number at 25 and below. As you can see, on a couple of situations, they might be at about 26. PE on occasion can be 27 when there are three or four teachers on staff during that period. Thank you.
Assistant Chairperson, the sixth grade numbers. If anybody has a sixth grader in town this year, enjoy every minute of it because that's private school numbers, and we will be reorganizing next year because they are very, very small.
Do we have any other questions?
I'm saving my questions for Mr. Tracy.
He can't wait, I can tell. Ms. McMiniman, I noticed on the, it's on page 11, the health teachers, the health department. What is the, what do they have to have to be a health teacher? What is the certification for that, a special health certification?
Yes, there are actually two that qualify, I think, for both buildings, and they can have a health license through the DESE, or there's also one called Health or Family Consumer Science and Health. So there are two. So most of the people, well, the two teachers that we've hired, have a strong background in health, and wellness, and nutrition, and not physical education, but health education.
That was going to be my question. They're not aligned to the physical education department.
Not our two health teachers.
Okay.
No, that's a separate course at the middle school, and it's a semester long.
And is that under, Mrs. Stinson?
Yes, it is.
Oh, good, okay. Great, thank you. Do we have any? I think Ms. McMiniman, you're off the hot seat. That's good. We're waiting for Robert.
So you will also see some very, very low class sizes in the high school schedule, and I'll ask Mr. Tracy to address, point anything extraordinary out, or talk about what he'd like this evening. I do want to, this year, think about how we can combine some of those small classes and offer more AP classes.
I'm sorry. That's where I was going.
I must have read your mind, but you had said, you had asked about the Boston Magazine scores a few months ago, and I want to say it for the public. That is a formula that is done with SAT scores, number of students in the high school, number of AP classes, number of kids that score, three, four, or five in AP. So that is probably one of the areas where we are fall down in. So I think in order to ratchet up, Mr. Tracy's done a great job of sort of raising expectations to high school by making, increasing requirements, but I think we need to go look at that as well. So for the budget process, we might want to think about reorganizing a little bit. But every year since I've been here, and I think quite a few years when Superintendent McCollough was here, we had a grievance every, every year on high school class sizes, and I'm so proud to say there were none this year. Mr. Tracy.
Thank you. I always await that grievance at the beginning of the year, and none this year. We are very fortunate to carry the numbers that we carry. I love to be able to brag to area principals, parents, and anybody I can to say, you know, to highlight the things that we're doing well in the classroom. I think the class sizes allow us to do that even better. It has also benefited us. Right now, we have 941 students in the high school, about 35 or 38 less than we had last year, and as you know, previously, we've been over 1,000. So that trend is going to continue down over time, which is, in this year, enabled us to keep some very low class sizes, and also to experiment a little bit with some of the combining of time and allowing some overlap in specific areas. For example, you'll notice there's a class in there called Speak Up, which is a speech class that has, right now, nine students enrolled, but it also has six others that are from the life skills program that work with them every other day. So it's not reflective of the true numbers all the time. The teacher has been unbelievable at bringing the life skills program into the Speak Up program to teach the kids about basic public speaking and presentation skills, to really help them as they look for jobs, as they transition through our vocational, excuse me, our educational vocational program for the life skills kids. It's a huge benefit for these children. And another opportunity we're able to do is take special ed classes and overlap our self-contained sped classes, which tend to average between two and five kids in a classroom. We were able to overlap them with algebra, biology, world history, US history, and physical science, so that those kids, that those groups of kids can be moved in and out of the regular ed classroom in more of an inclusionary setting style. So if you see a class of 16, we left room in there so that those three, four, or five kids could be pulled in and out, so that they get what they haven't gotten in the past, a true lab experience. They're actually involved in a regular education, classroom, lab exercise, doing all the same exercises, working with the kids on anything that is necessary and required. After all, they all take the same test. They're all required to pass those same requirements for MCAS, and it's incumbent on us to make sure that they get every experience that every other kid in the building gets. So that's a huge change for us this year. Excuse me. We were also able to create some, some common planning time across departments, which in some places, we learned some lessons where the schedule was skewed, and in other places, it really helped out, where, for example, the teachers who teach Algebra I and the teachers who teach physical science have the same common time off, the same common period off, for example, period III. The teachers who teach biology and geometry, and a couple of the art teachers have the same period off. So when we start to look through those combinations, all the way through English and history and science and math specifically, that was my focus this year, we were able to pull that off for math, science, English, and social studies, so that we had those overlaps, so we can take all the work that we did with the project-based learning in our CIT, CIT time last year, and now have teachers start to build and develop those projects together so that they can pull two different content areas together, or more, three or four. There's no limit to how we can do it. This year was really our first time that we were able to do it because the new Aspen system, the algorithms that we can build are much more complex and allow us to really twist and turn the schedule in ways that we haven't been able to do it. So we've been able to take advantage of these smaller sizes. We also have a different model that we're looking at, and also, again, looking at getting ready for the new high school, where we have an honors English teacher and an honors 10th grade US history teacher who share the same group of kids, they don't meet at the same time. The kids are with one one period and with another period. The teachers have a common planning time. They compare and synchronize their syllabus and any of the work that they're doing in class, and those kids benefit from that content area connection, if you will, which is really a good way for us to look at how things should look in the 21st century high school that we're going to build. And that's, that's what we've been able to do with the flexibility and the schedule this year. On the lower end, you look at some of the classes like special ed, most of them have to remain below eight legally, so they range between one and seven or eight students. And when they get above that, we have to add an educational aid. There are also things like math workshop and a language arts workshop. Those classes are purposefully reduced in size so that those students get more of a one-to-one focus. Those are kids who have had difficulty with MCAS or have not met the 240 requirement in those areas of MCAS. So the teachers can work more closely with a group of six or seven or eight or 10 in those workshop classes to enable them to get the base skills along with their regular math class to be able to perform to the proficiency standard of MCAS. So we've been able to really pull off a lot of connections and interconnectability with this, the schedule, and certainly the class size of average of 18.5 is well below anything I've seen since I've been here. We've been averaging 20, which was great. So I think, you know, given the reduction in population, the continued trend down, as Mrs. Benton had stated, we will have to look at ways to redeploy and add AP programs or even look at other programs that are possibilities for high school age students.
Thank you. Do we have any? Mr. Hayes?
Sure. Thank you, Chairwoman Kane. I clearly liked what I saw with this report. As you mentioned, 18 and a half for the class average, and when you factor out the performing arts, you only have five classes that have a class size above 22. And, you know, it's just amazing. So that's fantastic. And I liked what I heard about, I heard some things about common planning time, and I heard some things about interdisciplinary learning, all great things. I do have four questions for you, though. So my first question is, and I've said this before, so I'm going to be a broken record, but there's 558 students at the high school taking Spanish. There are 61 students taking French. What is the future of the French program at the high school?
In all honesty, I don't see it continuing down the road. We can't sustain it. We've tried over the years to sustain it. We backfilled it. We've even, we even experimented a little with this last year during the budget cycle with this year's change in personnel, and that hasn't benefited. We've looked at adding the Italian, pushing the Italian harder at the middle school so that we have that core group that will travel up through the system. And that seems to be the way this community will go with the languages.
Sure. There's only four classes at the middle school level for French.
Right, and two eighth grade. So when you pass them on to the ninth grade, many stay with it, and some switch to Spanish, some switch to Italian.
My biggest mistake in high school, one of my biggest mistakes, taking French. It only serves me when I go on vacation to Old Orchard Beach. Other than that, I've never used French since I've graduated. So I really wish, professionally and personally, I had taken Spanish. But I do think if the long-term plan is to, you know, eliminate the French program, then I think we need to get word to these, you know, fifth and sixth grade parents and let them know that their students may be better off taking Spanish or Italian. So obviously, I'm sure you've thought of that, but I just raised that. Also, interestingly, just as many students take sign language as they do French.
Very popular, yeah.
59 for the three sign language classes and 61 for the four French classes.
I think Mr. Tracy could have run five of those classes.
I had almost 200 students request that course.
So that's interesting. That's interesting to know. And so that was question one. Question two, I noticed on page 10 and 11, there's listings for 10 interns. I'm wondering if you could explain, I noticed that four of them are life skill students, so I understand that. What are the others, what are the other six? What does an intern do?
Teacher interns, let me back up a little bit. As you know, we have the career paths model.
Right.
And we would certainly be remiss if we were not promoting teaching as a profession.
Sure.
This is a great opportunity for our kids to get into the ranks of teaching by learning what teachers do, how they prepare. These kids are actually looking at developing lessons, helping teachers within the classroom, trying to get an idea if they really do want to teach. And I have really tried to push the expansion of that, and teachers have been great pulling kids in and helping them to get in the middle of what teaching's all about. So I think it's a beneficial, beneficial program for our kids.
Sure.
To get a good taste of teaching. And we do not turn out enough teachers in this country, and we want to be able to continue to push that, so.
I understand. Sounds like a good, good idea, it's just something I wasn't too familiar with.
Yeah.
My third question has to do with virtual high school. Are all 25 seats filled? What is the demand for that? Do we need to add a, I don't know if it's financially or logistically possible, but do we need to add another 25 seats? How is that program working?
Right now, we're at capacity for the semester. They run by semester, 25 seats a semester. We also have a teacher who is required to teach a course in virtual high school, so we essentially pull that teacher out of our schedule, and they teach an online course, not with our students. So that's the, kind of the sharing model that they use. It is something we may want to look at down the road, expanding. And again, when we look at budgets, it's a good way to save some money along the way because of, you can buy packages, basically, and you can look at options. There are several options that they've developed over time that allow you to buy smaller or larger packages now.
Right.
But it's grown. When we first offered it, we had a little difficult time, we got nervous-
Sure.
-getting those seats filled. Now we have kids trying to get into the seats in May for the September classes.
Right.
It's, they're getting it now, and I think parents are starting to really see the value in that, and I think a lot of the kids realize when they talk to their friends who go off to college and realize that they're taking some of their courses online in college. So it's a good prep. And it gives them an option to take something that we don't offer, like zoology.
Right.
You know, it's a great way for kids to try out something new, interact with kids all across, you know, internationally, and really be able to get a foothold in that online world.
Gotcha. And I thank you for that. And then my final question, and Superintendent Benton already touched upon it, but I, and again, I had mentioned this last year, but the number of AP classes we offer, you know, again, I just, you know, I hope that in the future we do decide to increase the AP offerings. When I went to school here, I graduated 10 years ago, we actually had, don't fact-check me on this, but I'm pretty sure we actually had more AP classes then than we do now. And by my count, we have six different courses, eight classes offered. AP English is offered twice, and AP Biology is offered twice, which I think is great. But clearly, clearly, there's a need for more AP classes, and I did compare our AP offerings to our surrounding communities, and we do rank, we are at the bottom, we are eighth in terms of courses offered, test takers, and tests taken. For advanced placement students, this is data from the DESE, slightly outdated, 2010, so, but I thought I would throw that out there. So, you know, if there's anything the school committee can do on our end to increase the number of AP class offerings at the high school, you know, please let us know, and I hope you do go in that direction.
It's, we will be increasing AP classes. It's imperative for people to know that the class sizes will be what you see.
Right.
Every one of our students in AP classes are required to take the AP test. We also are working up against a recommendation from any ASC to kind of open up the doors and let anybody take AP, which, which is, has not been our policy. We really kind of had them interview with the department head and go through a process of being recommended. So that is something we do intend to look at. The teacher prep is the other issue. We have to start now because the teacher has to go to a training course-
Sure.
-required initial training, and then has to write a syllabus, and it has to be approved by the college board before the course can be, can be offered. The last syllabus we wrote was last school year with biology, AP Biology. It took the teacher almost the entire year to complete the syllabus and get it into the approval state. So we, that's part of our plan as we approach the program of studies time, is to recruit that. The first one I'm pushing is AP Chemistry.
Yep.
So it's, but there are other areas, there are a lot of other areas that we can look at. We have kids take AP Economics, we don't even offer the course. We offer honors economics, and kids take the AP test and do very well. So we're looking at, you know, psychology and, you know, really working with some of the teachers and their expertise areas because you need, it's a commitment because it requires a summer component, too.
Sure.
There are usually seven to 10 units completed in the summer before those classes start. So there's some groundwork that will need to be done, and I, you know, I always just want to put it out there that those class sizes will not be 25 all the time.
So what I get from you is, I can expect this to happen overnight.
You'll see it in next year's schedule.
No, no. Okay. Well, that's great. That's good to hear. That's good to hear. And, you know, as always, I appreciate you listening to me, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Mrs. Bonnash?
I always have this question, Latin. Is there, there's only one class, and I, there is a big waitlist for Latin, is that correct?
Correct. There's about 28 students who were wait, on a waitlist. We did some shuffling with the foreign language departments, actually, six through 12 this year, and in order to kind of go after the first step, if you will, the Italian, really boost the Italians. So we did that this year. Caused some angst, and certainly, that's, that's going to happen. But Latin is something that I think the bigger conversation is, do we want to offer Latin, more Latin for seniors, or do we want to develop a lower-end program for freshmen and sophomores?
Absolutely.
The opposite, the other part of the conversation has to be certified teachers. There are not very many certified Latin teachers. So that's something else we have to look at, but, you know, as French disappears, we have to, we certainly have to look at filling those voids. What are we going to do with kids? Remember, we've been pushing to add a foreign language requirement. We do not have one, it's still unelected here. If we go in that direction, we need to think about, you know, what we do with teaching staff, which could be that core shift that Mrs. Benton talked about, and then how we deliver and what we deliver. Do we go into Mandarin Chinese? Do we go into Japanese? Do we go into, you know, strengthening the Latin program? So those are conversations we'll have to have as we go through the next probably two years, two cycles. The determination will be, I think, how the numbers diminish with our students, but then how we want to service the kids that we have along the way, given, given the components of a language program, you know, what we're going to offer. We did run a survey two, two years ago?
I think it was two.
It was two years ago.
For the fourth and the fifth grade parents.
For the fourth and fifth grade parents, and we asked them right out, would you want to see Mandarin Chinese offered? Would you want to see this? So that gave us some groundwork for conversation. I think we need to do that again because things are changing so quickly with, on the international scale, on the global scale. We really have to look at what we're preparing our kids to do and what we're preparing, where we're preparing our kids to go. We've started to see kids take, go to college in other countries. So I think that's, you know, that's imperative for us to take a peek at how that's going to expand.
Okay.
I just have a couple of questions. One of the questions is, how many of the courses that we offered this year in the course selection chart did we not run?
Good question.
Approximately a half dozen.
And do you have a specific reason that they didn't run? Was it because of the number of kids who signed up, or that you didn't have the staff- Was it because of the number of kids who signed up, or that you didn't have the staff, or what?
A little of both, the number of kids is certainly one. Other than AP courses, we try to manage based on number of kids. If you have four kids selected, like I'll just use, let's use Advanced Physics as an example, I had four kids sign up for it.
That's what I was going to bring up, too, because I was, this summer, somebody approached me about that, yeah.
Yeah, Advanced Physics had four students sign up for it. But we do allow those students to take it online as kind of the backup, or in other places. We've had kids take calculus in the summertime at Middlesex College, and they've done extremely well. So we're trying to look at other avenues for kids as well. The other thing is preps and contract requirements. I have to stay within the requirements of the contract. We really tried hard to balance the teacher's loads under 100 students, which is amazing. I just think we did a great job with this year. And I think the, the contract requirements, the three preps, we have to stay within that. So when we look at a department of people, we have to look at how those preps will balance. And sometimes we do have to squeeze courses out based on prep availability.
And one of the things I want to talk about for a second is the, the way you have the setup for the facing history. And just wanted to give a little promotion to the way that I had done that my last five years of teaching. And we had the history teacher and myself, I would teach English third period, he would teach history, fourth period. I would teach those fourth period kids, third period, and he would teach, we would, in other words, we had two classes in a row, and we covered all our students. And because we did that, we were able to, once a week, once a week was built into the curriculum, and then whenever else we wanted to do it, we had the entire 50 students in one classroom and doing projects and doing work. It was, I cannot tell you, I cannot, I am so eager to see something like that tried. But what happened, every single year, we had to go in over the summer, and we had to give up something because of the scheduling. And it was the scheduling that was the problem. But if you put the two back-to-back classes, oh, I cannot tell you, the teachers would be so thrilled. It worked, it worked so beautifully. Whenever we had a movie or anything, we, that was the day we all got together. We'd use the library, we'd use the auditorium, or it was fabulous. So I can't, hopefully, you might at some point be able to do something like that.
That's the steps, we took the initial steps last year with the project-based learning. Differentiated instruction two years ago.
Right.
Project-based learning last year, which really culminated in people coming up with some good ideas, both departmentally and interdepartmentally, cross-content. The steps between now and the new school are really going to be imperative, and we have to stay focused, which is difficult, given all that needs to be done. So we're trying to keep the teachers focused on that instructional piece, and let, not have them worry too much about the outside things. And I think, you know, given the changes that have been made with supervisory personnel and looking at the common core, it's really driving that type of a model. And as you've seen, the new school design, it really is a beneficial way to go once you get into that type of a model.
And one last question. How do you inform the parents? Because I know in the high school, they're much more aware. The middle school, you have a pretty standard curriculum, and it's not, they're not going to be those changes.
A lot of choice, right.
A lot of choice. How, how do you inform the high school parents over the summer when the students are not going to have what they think they're going to have in the, or do they just come back in the fall and find that out?
All we have to do is tell one person, and everybody knows. Believe it or not, but no, we call them. We, Mr. Mahoney and I spent much of the summer on the phone, calling kids, saying, this is not going to work for you, we need this. We went through quite a few hundreds of kids with just schedule snafus that, they had to make a decision, basically. They had four electives, they could only get two, and there was a slot for something else, what do they want to take? That type of thing, or.
So they did have input.
Something's not going to run, yeah, we try and get them in all summer long. And Mr. Mahoney spends his days calling kids in and wrestling with schedule adjustments. And then they go home and they change their mind, and they come back the next day. But no, we reach out to them via phone and try and get as many of them in before the guidance councils come in. They come in a few days before school starts, so we try and iron out a lot of the bigger issues. And then the guidance councils take over that four days before school starts, people that we couldn't get a hold of, or any other adjustments. As we go, we balance and rebalance, and we may, you know, have 12 sections of, of English 11. By the time we get to the end of August, we might only have nine due to changes of kids dropping levels or going up a level. So we have a lot of dynamics in play throughout the summer.
Oh, good, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it, explanation.
Next is the Progress and Performance Index Report. And if you wouldn't mind writing our new district data assessment, Juanita, Jen Jenkins up.
Hi, Jen, please join us at the table.
And she and Kate will give a little bit, report on it. Jen did a nice PowerPoint of the difference between AYP and PPI. Before we go through this, I just wanted to let everybody know that what has been printed in the papers is not correct. Our high school score, level has been appealed. And the DESE will be meeting next week, because we believe that we are a Level 1 high school, and I think we showed in the proof. They released the scores to the reporters before they put on it pending appeal. So I know, I had spoken to another reporter from another paper in our patch that had, you know, gotten the results the night before. And I had received the email from the DESE that night. So I sent that letter, it didn't make it into the paper, but the level, the high school scores are not, are almost embargoed because we're waiting for the appeal. So we'll talk about everything else this evening.
Does Jen need us to move?
Yes.
So the plan tonight is just to go over the difference between AYP and the new PPI system. You had received previously the summary of that information for each school. So rather than spend time going over each of the schools, I wanted to just help make sure everyone's on the same page in terms of interpreting that information, and certainly answer any questions you have about it. Because this is a new system, we're adjusting as a district. I've actually spent, today I was at two different staff meetings trying to communicate out to staff the same information so that everyone understands these changes. And so I'm happy to do that with you here tonight. So let me just get you started here. Okay, so first, if you look at them side by side, previously with accountability, only some schools received an accountability status, and other schools would have no status. Now, all schools have an accountability status label, and that includes all public schools, including, what's the, what am I thinking of? The.
Charters?
Charters, thank you. Yeah, so charter schools as well are part of this. So AYP used to only be related to math and ELA, and now there's a much more broad net that they're casting, which I, you know, as I talk to staff and administration, I think this is a more meaningful measure in so many ways because it encompasses math and ELA, as well as science, performance. But it also counts growth in the two major subject areas, math and ELA. And for high school students, there's some other pieces related to graduation rates. In the past, we looked at, we were assessed not only on all of our students, but also on a variety of different subgroups. The issue with that was that it's very common that a student in one subgroup would be counted multiple times. So you might have a special education student that was also a low-income student, and so they were counting towards the district not once, but twice. So in some ways, they were sort of scored twice as important as any other student. And so it just wasn't a very fair system. And so now, what they've done is, they've simplified it by creating what they term a high-needs grouping. And just imagine, this is sort of a bucket of students that fall into that category in any number of ways. ELL students are in that grouping, special education students are in that grouping, as well as low-income students. And so they're all together in that group and only counted once. Whether they're in there for more than one reason, it doesn't matter. They're in that group and counted once per child. And then prior to the new system, our goal was 100% proficiency, which I think we all knew was, was a frustrating goal because it just seemed like we would never reach it. And, and in many districts where they were starting so much further behind, it was even more frustrating because they had such a hill to climb. So what they've done now is, they've customized our goals based on where the school started from. So the goal is based on what they consider proficiency gap. So your gap would be, let's say you started at 80% proficiency, that's where you were at in 2011. The difference between that 80% 2011 baseline and the goal of 100%, that is cut in half. So instead of 20% being where they're asking you to go, they're asking for 10% from a school that started at 80. And then they're slicing that up over a period of six years, 2017 being that, that end point for where they're sort of looking to make sure schools are headed, and dividing those pieces towards that 10% up over six years. So each year, you have an annual gap having goal. And that gap having goal is that step increase each year that you're supposed to be maintaining in order to reach that ultimate goal of having your proficiency gap in 2017. Now, there are two student groups. There's the all-student group and the, and the high-needs student group. And each student group, because they have a different starting point, also has a different ending point. So the gap having goals differ for those two groups. And they would, of course, also differ for each individual school because, again, their starting point is different. So they're essentially customized goals for each school, okay? So this is just a visual interpretation of that information. You can see on the graph at the top, there are two lines, one representing math and one representing ELA, and the target being 100 on the top right of that graph. And that was the previous AYP goal, so it was a very steep slope upward. And depending on the subject, it was an even steeper slope, for example, for math classes to go. And then the bottom graph is showing a more gradual but positive increasing on the, both the math and ELA. And again, their endpoints are different because it's based on where the starting point is. So for elementary and middle schools, PPI is looking at gap closing, which is reducing that, that difference in proficiency from 100 to where you started, cutting that in half, for the three subjects, math, ELA, and science, and looking at student growth for ELA and math. And just to remind you, the reason why you can't look at student growth for science is that you need those two subsequent years, and back-to-back. And because you don't have that set up for science, that's why that's excluded from the student growth piece. And then, what's really nice and very appealing to staff, because it's an encouraging thing when, when there's recognition in schools for the fact that there is work that happens even outside of just the progress in general of kids moving, that in the past, when a kid scored advanced or proficient, we kind of got the same amount of credit for that student. Now, they offer extra credit for moving students from proficient into advanced. And that extra credit is available whenever you move 10% or more of your student population from proficient to advanced. And the same is true for moving students from warning into needs improvement. So these are all positive changes we're doing with kids, and now they're getting some recognition for that, which is really encouraging. Participation on MCAS is another piece of that. In the past, that was considered kind of bonus. You know, you got extra points for having a certain percentage of kids. The state, the state has been very specific on this, that they feel that the participation rate is something that's expected, that a minimum of 95% participation is a given. So rather than getting credit, instead, there's a potential for being penalized if you don't meet that 95%. And that is true not just for your whole student population, but also for your high-needs population. Their participation rate is calculated separately, which can get a little dicey when you have a small population of kids. This includes things like medical, you know, reasoning. If you have a doctor's note that says a child should not participate in MCAS, the state does not consider that an excused absence. It all factors into that extra 5% buffer that they give you, which seems reasonable to an extent, but then when you realize how small some of the high-needs population is, it can be a little bit tricky. So probably more on that later. But just so you understand participation. And again, high schools have that added piece of graduation and annual dropout rates. So there are two ways to think about PPI. There's the cumulative piece, which is, of course, over time, and cumulative in the case of PPI is over four years. And there's also annual PPI, which is what those pictures that I, that I gave you in your, in your packets are. So just to clarify the difference, cumulative PPI is based on four years, and it's weighted so that the most recent year is weighted most heavily. So in this example, 2012 data is weighted times four, 2011 times three, 2010 times two, and 2009 counts once in the mix. They're all added up and then divided by 10, and that's where you get your cumulative PPI number. It is that number that determines the level for the school, the cumulative PPI. Okay? And then on the, all the groups get, the two groups get their PPI calculated. So there's a separate calculation for the high-needs and the, and the all-students group. You might recognize the picture on the bottom, if you've looked at any of the data that's available from the state. And this graphic is sort of like, the red dot represents the finish line, if you will. That's where you're trying to get to. So you'll notice in this example, the all-groups was reached, right? And it says to the right, met, does it say met target? I don't have my glasses. God bless you, thank you, okay. I know it should say that. And then below it, you can see that it's shy of that red line. So it should say, did not meet target, if I had my glasses on. Okay. So, so anyway, this is, this is showing for the whole school, this is what feeds into that, that leveling picture. This is the cumulative PPI. So again, you have five measures, right? So definitely a lot more information feeding into this than in the past. And over four years, so that previous data counts, but not as much the further away you get from it. And so, in this example, this school is showing as a Level 2, and it's a Level 2 because it's not meeting gap having goals. If you remember from the previous slide, for that one student group, that high-needs group, we're shy of that, that finish line, remember? And so if you miss that finish line for either of your student groups, then you do not meet your gap having goal, okay? It's important to understand, though, that the terminology, Level 1, and I wish they called them like A, B, and C, because then it would sort of, you know, freshen your mind into the idea that these are not like previous leveling. So I know we've used those different levels before, but it's quite different because you can, you can be a Level 2 school and actually be outperforming a Level 1 school. And we'll talk more about that in the next slide when we look at school percentile. Because remember, the goals are based on your own school. So if you're a high-performing school, then your goal is high. And so it's, it's a little bit different. So just to give you a perspective, 80% of all schools in the state are in Level 1 or Level 2. If you talk to colleagues in the state who may be a Level 3 or below, what I'm telling you about meeting the goal and that being a kind of a personalized goal for your school, that does not apply in those schools. So I don't mean to confuse you, but rather than talk about things that don't apply to us, just so you understand, Level 3 and below, those schools have to meet goals that are established by the state and based on trying to climb out of that bottom 20%. So they, in those lower groups, are actually kind of comparing themselves to other schools, and that's how they're moving out of those levels. For us, though, because we're in the green, which is good, that, that's, our level is based on goals that, that we have, that have been set for us so that we continue to move our students in a positive direction. And because all the schools are starting from a different place, those numbers are themselves different. Okay, so 80%, just to break that down for you, Level 1 schools, the state has reported there are approximately 35% of schools in Level 1, approximately 45% in Level 2.
Can I interrupt for one minute?
Yep.
And the 35% in Level 1 are mostly 9 through 12 vocational schools or charter schools. And if you look at the number of kids in those charter schools, it's much less. And you're not dealing with the middle school population, which is the population that has performed the lowest traditionally across the state because I have to say this, because it makes me crazy. They really penalize the middle school students. The cutoff is much higher for middle school students than it is for high school students. A number of problems you get correct, so.
Okay, so there is a piece of information that does help you to put into perspective how we're doing as it compares to other schools in the state, which is, is an important piece. piece of information as well. So it's good to know how we're doing against our own goals, but it's also nice to see where we are in relation to other schools in the state. So you'll notice that there is a school percentile, and it will say that it's based on the grade span. So what that means is, our lower grades, so our K through five grades, are all lumped together with all other K through five schools in the state. Okay? So even though we have intermediate schools, which are a little bit unusual, that type of grouping, they're together with all the elementary schools, K to five. Okay? And then, there's, you know, there's different, for us, there's that elementary grouping, and then there's a middle school grouping, which is six through eight, and also seven through eight. I mean, yeah, seven, eight are together with that, six, eight, and five, I think, five, eight. Does that sound right, Kate?
Yes.
Yeah. So again, you're just trying to put your, you know, our school is sort of grouped into other schools that would be part of our cohort, if you will, of serving similar-aged kids. The high school is part of the typical high school model, and then also, I think even, I forget, I think there's a separate parameter for schools that are seven through twelve, that's a separate grouping. So you'll notice here that it shows a bar, and then it will show the percentile for that school. So that's indicating where that school falls in comparison to other schools within the state. Again, this is based on four years of data, so if you had a really great year this year, that's not going to be reflected, I mean, it's partially reflected in that grade span number, but it's over four years. So it's based on their cumulative PPI. Okay. So this brings us to the picture that I submitted to you folks to review, and that was to try to help you see how we did in this past year. So we have the cumulative PPI that's based on four years of data, but the most important piece of data is the one that we just had, so that we can start to evaluate whether changes we made were effective and what actions we should take in the coming year. And so for each of the schools, you have a similar grid. And what I have on this grid is showing you a row for each of the test subject areas and then those two subgroups. So the first row, it shows the ELA all students, and the categories are displayed along the top. So green means good, I'm a visual learner, yellow means caution, and red means danger, Will Robinson. Okay? So the first box is green because they met the target. In other words, remember how we said that each year you have that little step to climb? And if you want to kind of keep on target, then you should be making so much of a jump each year. And so this is showing that that, in fact, happened in that category for all students. And then the growth is based, that's not based on the school's target, it's based on what the state establishes as the growth kind of, you know, what they'll give you points for. So low growth is like forty percent or below, and then, you know, forty to sixty percent is moderate growth. And so they assign points based on meeting that, you know, hitting that growth target, that is, the same for everyone. And then there's that extra credit piece that we talked about. It's important to know that there's no partial extra credit, so a school could, in fact, move nine percent of their kids from warning to needs improvement, but get no extra credit. So it's not a bad thing if it's not green, it just, it tells you they didn't meet that ten percent. Okay? And so, when you see something like no change, that indicates that they maintained the same level from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twelve in terms of their student performance. So that flatness is something we want to be cautious of, because we're trying to move up, not stay the same. Okay? And then, if you see a red decline, that's an indication that rather than staying the same or moving up, we actually went down based on the two thousand and eleven data. So again, remembering that every school has a different starting point. If a school had a really great two thousand and eleven year, then that school's bar is set higher than another school in the district. So a school that's showing all green may partially be doing that because the two thousand and eleven baseline was not as high as others. If that wasn't a great year for you and your school, then that would be a little bit easier to be meeting your goals as you go along. Okay? So are there any questions that I can answer for you as you look through this? I'm hoping that was helpful.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
For the extra credit, you don't get extra credit to go from needs improvement to proficient, only from the bottom to the next?
Well, what they're trying to do is they're trying to deal with the fact that there was no resolution on that. So you do get, you know, you're getting, your gap closing is accounting for that, right? Because your gap has to do with, are you proficient or are you not proficient?
Yeah.
So needs improvement, warning are in the not proficient bucket, and proficient and advanced are in the proficient bucket, right? So you're getting credit for those within that gap closing, that gap narrowing piece. But what was happening is, if you did move some kids from warning to needs improvement, which is a great, that's a positive thing for kids and for schools to be doing, and that's, you've got to start from somewhere. So if you're going from warning and you want to get to proficient, you've got to go through needs improvement. So it's showing that that progression is happening. And then, same for advanced, there was no extra credit, you know, you didn't get any more for the fact that kids were advanced or proficient, it was like, well, yay, they passed the test. And so, I think that's been a really positive thing, as I've gone and had the chance to talk with staff, that, you know, they feel like, all right, well, that's important to get visibility of those things, because that involves a lot of work, too, and accomplishment in making those shifts for kids.
Thanks. So next, the school committee will be looking at the individual MCAS results.
Yes.
Which will give you another sort of view of each of the schools. And this is very, very new to everybody in the state, and I think it's going to, I think Jen is, how many of these presentations have you done to date?
Four.
Four.
And I'm scheduled for more.
Yeah. Kate and I have been getting really positive feedback from teachers, because it's making it easier to understand. I think that, you know, the key is always looking at the red boxes, as Jen put it, because we have to figure out why we're declining in some areas. And I think you'll see at the next meeting, the middle school took, you know, a hard hit last year, and if you look at where they are in the state in relationship to where they were last year, they've done a lot of improvement. So I think that we will be seeing a lot of that in some areas. The interesting piece to the whole district situation is if you are only as good as your lowest-performing school. So that's how these district levels, one, two, three, and four are coming out, which is an interesting way of doing it. I'm not quite convinced it's the best way, but we'll see what happens. Kate, did you want to add anything? I think it's pretty comprehensive.
I just want to say that Jen really did an outstanding job of simplifying, at a glance, a lot of data in that one box. And like she said, having the colors, it really helps to, you know, see everything quickly.
I'm glad you pointed that out. That's not from the state, that's Jen's.
That's Jen's creation.
Because if you saw what the state gave us, you wouldn't have understood.
Oh, no.
Peggy.
Yes, I'm sure. Oh, Mr. Hayes.
Thanks, that's your woman, Kate. I just have a couple of quick comments. First of all, I was just wondering if the school committee could get a copy of this presentation?
Absolutely.
Because like you, I'm a visual learner myself, so I would appreciate that. And then, just to thank Assistant Superintendent Burnham and yourself for the presentation tonight, and I'm so glad the school committee created the data specialist position, and if this presentation is any indication, it seems like you're doing a wonderful job. And then finally, just real quickly, last year I was a little critical of the middle school for some of their MCAS scores, and I just wanted to say publicly, wanted to congratulate Principal McMinimum and her staff for doing a wonderful job, one of our top performers. And then again, want to congratulate the high school for, once again, doing a phenomenal job, and I'm sure that will win the appeal. We're winning a lot of appeals lately. We're going to win this one, too. And I look forward to the high school being a level-one high school.
Thank you, Robin. That's good one.
Any other questions? Thank you, we really appreciate it, it was a really great presentation.
Can we invite the two principals back up to the table?
Mrs. McMinimum and Mr. Tracy, we'd be delighted if you'd join us again. New business, substance abuse, education, and prevention programs.
Recently, there's been a lot more tragic misuses of drugs in the Wilmington community. And the Director of the Board of Health, Shelley Newhouse, and the Chief, and Christine and Erica and I met together last week to talk about, two weeks ago, to talk about how we could, first of all, publicize what we are doing in the schools for prevention, and secondly, to think about other ways that we could support each of the agencies. So Shelley Newhouse is going to be putting a group together to, a local drug coalition, to bring the different groups in town together to look at ways to fight what has become a growing concern in the town. There will be representatives from the school department on that committee. In the meantime, we wanted to show you what we are doing in that respect, and also, I think we all agree that this is not a school issue, it's a community issue, and it's an issue that is going to take us coming together, like we did with the bullying, when the bullying policy came out, and parents and students, and police officers, and nurses, and health teachers, and Board of Health coming together to educate and support each other. From my understanding from the Chief, the students, not students, former students that have been, you know, involved, a lot of these of them are coming out of treatment centers and then just going right back at it. So there needs to be more support for them. But I'd just like to ask the principals to touch base on some of the wonderful programs we're doing in the schools and some plans that we have that are new this year.
Thank you.
Sure, I can start briefly and talk about the piece of the curriculum that I included with, we talked a little bit earlier about the health classes, that they have a progression of skills that they learn with regard to health and wellness and drug and substance abuse, and they learn a lot of refusal skills, what the drugs actually do to your body and your system, and the pressures that come along with that and being in certain situations. So the health teachers do do a lot of practice with that. We do have the SAD program that we have been able to begin under the umbrella of the Wildcat Project, which has been great and beneficial to the school climate at the middle school. We are kicking that off, the club starts up again on October third next week, and Ms. Moskell, who's the student advisor for SAD, has a group of student leaders that are helping her prepare for that opening kickoff meeting. And they are going to help us promote what we have coming in, again, as a drug awareness assembly for seventh and eighth graders, specifically for right now, that is coming from New Beginnings, and it's talked a little bit about in the packet. And we have Bill Phillips, who runs this organization called New Beginnings, and he is coming to our school to present an assembly, a pretty powerful assembly, based on his own personal experiences and going through recovery through drug addiction. And he also brings with him several guests, and one of the guests typically has been Chris Sullivan, who's a former New England Patriot and Boston College Eagle. And he talks about his personal story and his struggle with addiction, and what it did to his family and his friends and his relationships, as well as his livelihood and his job. So it really hits home for a lot of the kids, and they're able to ask questions, and it becomes interactive toward the end in some question and answer. So the SAD students, along with Ms. Moskell, are going to be promoting that, welcoming New Beginnings to our school on October fifth for those two assemblies. And that will build up to the week that also, of course, at the high school will be celebrated, which is Red Ribbon Week, which is nationally a week that we recognize what it means to be drug-free and substance-free. So those are some exciting things for us coming up, to prepare the children, to educate the children. We'll be putting emails out and corresponding with parents to let them know these events are coming up. And as many of our groups are signing up these past few weeks, they're up and running, it's exciting to see SAD get off the ground. And we've been actually the recipients of a lot of, I guess, guidance from the SAD advisors at the high school, because they've been in it a little bit longer than we have, but we felt it was truly necessary three years ago, along with, you know, Superintendent Benton, that we initiate this at the middle school level, because kids are being exposed to things younger, when they are out and about, on occasion when they might even be in the school building, and they have to do the right thing. And that's easy to say, and it's more difficult to do, whether it's teletrusted adult, that you see something in your school that you know doesn't belong, or to say no and maybe seek out the school resource officer and say, something's going on I think you should know about. And that's what does happen when you have a school climate that allows for that.
And we will be doing, bringing the dogs in at the middle school this year, as well as the high school. We want to send a message, and the police are very eager to support our efforts and to help us do that. Principal Tracy has had more experience with it, with the Wildcat Project. Thank you, Christine, for acknowledging the work that they have done that's helping us at the low-grade levels.
Yes.
But I have to back up, before the Wildcat Project, we really jump into it early in Wilmington, lower grades, fourth and fifth grade, and certainly start to begin that process that continues all the way through high school, to a point where, when they jump into their freshman health and PE classes, that's, those are topics of discussion along the way. And then that serves as a great foundation for the things that we've been able to do with our SAD program. We have over sixty kids involved in the SAD program, just at the high school alone. Not only do they work with the middle school students, they also work at the fifth-grade level to do mini plays, if you will, or skits about decision-making and drug and alcohol issues that kids may confront or face. The Wildcat Project, as you have seen, has grown leaps and bounds. It started out as something we just said, we're going to do it just before proms, and it's going to be a mandatory event, and, you know, people moaned and groaned, and as soon as we got through that first one, we got more great feedback, where people were like, this was unbelievable, I could talk to my kids about it, gave me an open door, did this. We got some feedback that we never expected. It's allowed that program to grow into points where we're bringing in one to two speakers for each class every year on decision-making and drug and alcohol awareness, and things like the yellow dress, and bringing in a broad spectrum of opportunities for our kids to learn about, talk about, and open their eyes and open, you know, kind of doors. Even when you have impact speakers that come in and bring, you know, the crowd to tears, that is something that kids remember, respond to, and carry on as they go through high school. We certainly have all the policies in place, I think we have the right policies in place where we give kids, you know, there are penalties, but there are also ways to redeem yourself, to take the right steps. Self-reporting, where you don't get into, you know, trouble, so to speak, we try and reach out and get kids the help that they need, the families the help that they need. And I think that's been beneficial here in conjunction with the school resource officer position, that's been able to reach out into the community, make the connections with kids in school, make, build those relationships, and be able to connect back with the police department as they're out in the evenings and nighttime when we're not around. Certainly, kids get it, and it's not, for lack of trying, we have a lot, as you can see in this report, there are a ton of things going on at the high school through the school year. Certainly, the kids know about it, talk about it, and if I may, I'd like to take a second to read something that I received today. This was actually written by a student. It's pretty interesting. If you've ever read Hamlet, "To be or not to be, that is the question," well, this is an emulation of it. "To drink or not to drink? To drink or not to drink, that is the question. Whether tis easy to take that red solo cup and face the consequences, or say no to the questionable liquid within. And by saying no, making the right decisions. To decline, to pass up the solo cup, no thank you. And by saying no, thank you, I face the judgment of others. But a safe ride home. That each cup, each cup hold 'tis a mistake I do not wish to face. To drink, to corralse, to corralse, perhaps too much, that's the problem. For in the over-drinking, what events might occur when we ignore our moral compass? We must, must make us stop and think. That is the decision. That makes a disaster out of one fun night. For who really wants to face jail time? The question of why, child, why? The sickening feeling, not from that cup, but from the disappointment the parents face? The ashamed looks, the angry parent sends you in your inebriated direction, when they too have made mistakes, when twenty-one free from repercussions? Who would pass up such an offer, to step away from teenage conformity? But the paralyzing horror that something may be said, of unknown events that have tis this guilt arose? The calumny disgust while you The calumny discussed while you sway in a confused haze wishing you had said, no thanks, I'll pass? Instead of seeking those wild twenty-one minutes of fun before havoc broke loose among? Thus the chance of missing out does not make sinners out of us. And thus the bliss of fermented drink is tainted by eye-opening thoughts of incarceration? Now cognizant with reality ablaze? And with this regard, your future will undoubtedly change and find your voice in favor of no thanks? And if you've ever read through the soliloquy, Hamlet, it does with "To Be or Not to Be," dead on, but kid's perspective, Michaela Palumbo, who's a senior at the high school, wrote that. It was just passed on to me this morning and I, we had passed it on to the Wildcat group and I thought it was appropriate. Kids really do think about, talk about all these things. I think they learn along the way through our school system. And again, it's a community problem. And certainly, we're very willing to stay involved and help out and look forward to some of the benefits that the new committee, statewide committee, will bring to our kids.
It's hard to go on from there. That was really, really great.
How early do we start talking to the kids about drugs and alcohol? What grade level?
Fourth grade.
Fourth grade? Yeah. It's good to know. I have two kids that are, one of them's right about to go into fourth grade next year. They're in third grade, so that's.
I think they start, you know, talking basic things, obviously. And then they talk about tobacco and cigarettes and how that can lead. And then you talk about marijuana and pills, how that can lead. And they just constantly are talking about everything being a gateway to the next level. The earlier you start, the more difficult it is to stop that headed in that direction.
And, you know, unfortunately, what's in your cabinet's at home.
I was just going to say that, yeah. Mrs. Tracy.
And I think, I think a thing to keep in mind is, you know, we, I've said it before when I've spoken to parent groups about ways to open those doors. Take the newspaper out, take an article out of somebody who got hurt or something that happened or something that's drug-related. Take one of those articles and read it, you know, before supper or after supper. It begins that conversation. Even if you have to read it to your kids, they may not be able to read it themselves and be able to at least start the, what do you think? What do you think about this? What decisions could they have made? What should have happened? Look at the picture of this car after this accident. What do you think went wrong? There's a lot of opportunity there. And I continue to push that as a model for parents to stay involved and to be able to use the things around them to open those doors for kids at any age. Second grade, I started with my kids reading those newspaper articles and just opening a very small discussion. But I believe today that, you know, my oldest is sixteen, I think that impact is there. So it'll take all of us.
Scary age on the license cards.
Yeah, next week.
Yes, Mrs. Carroll.
I do think it's a community problem. I just don't think it starts here, it starts outwards. I would really like to see, you know, our outside sports getting involved with us, be advocate for us. I mean, I know I've had a couple of different people come up to me and approach me and said, you know, I'd like to help the school system. You know, I know Wilmington Poppona said, I'd like to help the Wilmington school system to promote this, to do something about this. Families know about it. Parents should be talking to their kids about it, even if they hear it at the moolahs. Go home, talk to your kids. Hey, listen, I heard so-and-so, you know, was doing this. What do you think? Don't you think that's wrong? I, you know, so I definitely think we should all get involved. Just not us and not just them, the community. We need to, we need to bite this. We need to get a hold of this and do it right.
We'll be hearing a lot more. We're going to do a lot of, use a lot of social media to get the word out.
Yeah, I think so.
That's where the kids are at these days.
And that's one thing I do agree with, social media is great for that kind of stuff, to get things out. Mr. Hayes.
Just, thank you, Chairwoman Kane. Just on the flip side, though, there is certainly a negative to social media. As you mentioned, Principal McMinimum, in your report, how it's more pervasive, the references to alcohol and drugs. So I certainly acknowledge that, too. Just two quick things. First, I'm going to rattle off a couple of scary statistics. These are national statistics, not Wilmington statistics. But I think it really drives home the urgency of the matter. This is from the National Institute on Drug Abuse from the National Institutes of Health from 2011. Illicit drug use among teens has been rising largely due to increasing, the increase in popularity of marijuana. Seven point two percent of eighth graders, seventeen point six percent of tenth graders, and twenty-two point six percent of twelfth graders have used marijuana in the past month. Non-medical use of prescription and over-the-counter medicines remains a significant part of the teen drug problem. In 2011, fifteen point two percent of high school seniors used a prescription drug non-medically in the past year. And good news, bad news. Alcohol use among teens has actually dropped to historic lows nationally, but is still a problem. Four point four percent of eighth graders, thirteen point seven percent of tenth graders, and twenty-five percent of twelfth graders reporting, getting, reported getting drunk in the past month in a 2011 survey. So just to, things that have already been echoed, clearly, this is a national, is a societal problem, not just a Wilmington problem. And it's certainly not just a school problem, it's a community issue. And I'm glad that the coalition's being put together. And then my other comment, just real quickly, is I'm glad that schools are getting involved in this coalition. I'm glad that there'll be two students from the SAD group that will be a member of this coalition. And if there's anything the school committee can, you know, if there's anything the school committee can do to support this coalition, you know, please let us know. I think one good step might be to provide this, obviously, to the coalition. I'm sure you already have. And if this could be posted publicly on our website or on the coalition's website, because I think a lot of parents, and particularly, you know, parents of children who have already graduated or non-parents, they may not be as familiar with all the efforts that we're doing. So it would be great if we could make this more public somehow. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item of business, public comments. Do we have any public comments tonight? We'll move on. What have we? We do? Oh, sure.
Hi. My name is Eileen Calva.
Okay. I was going to say.
I'm a resident of Wilmington. I have two children in the Shawshine School, first and third grade. I wanted to comment, I had, I was just curious about where the negotiations and fact-finding mission stand with the Wilmington Nurses Association?
We're not able to discuss that, I'm sorry.
Okay, fair enough.
I can answer the question tomorrow if you give me a call. But it's not on the agenda. So that's not.
I haven't seen it on the agenda recently. So that's why I wanted to follow up, just to see where things were.
Well, when we're in negotiations, we really don't do it publicly. We can't do it publicly. And so we are bound by what we have to follow. And we, as a school committee, have to follow the idea that we can't discuss it. And so if you had specific questions, that Mrs. Benton can tell you, she would be glad to do that. But there might be many questions that she can't discuss, so.
Okay.
Because that's why it's negotiations, it's the give and take and, yeah, sorry.
Is it appropriate for me to make any comments at this point or give my own opinion?
It's not on the agenda.
We don't, no, it's not on the agenda, so it wouldn't be appropriate tonight.
You can put it in writing and send it to me and I will be glad to give it to the school committee.
Right.
And we can do it under correspondence in the next meeting if you'd like.
That'd be terrific.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming by. Anyone else? Okay. It's not on here, but it was missed, Subcommittee Reports. I just, Dr. Quick asked me to mention that she had, which one was this? She went to a Subcommittee today and it's the Health and Wellness Subcommittee. And she will be bringing up the notes at the next meeting. Because she usually comes right away and brings the notes. So she wanted us to know it's coming at the next meeting. Correspondence. No. Okay, but we did get one thing, so I'm bringing this up under correspondence. This is our, and we'll put this on the agenda for either the 10th, the 24th, the 10th. This is about our MASC, MASSS, Forty-Eighth Annual Joint Conference. And it's going to be down, we've already talked about that, in Thursday, Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and Saturday. Yeah. So, so far that we know of, Mrs. Burns is going to be attending, Mr. Hayes and myself. Was there anyone else who was planning to attend? Okay. Our annual meeting, the annual meeting that we always go over the positions and we give our positions, is on Friday afternoon at three o'clock. And Mrs. Burns has, so we'll do this at the next meeting. Mrs. Burns has volunteered to be our delegate to that meeting. And we really thank her a lot. That means a lot because if she has to go home in the traffic, that's, I don't know why they've changed it. It used to be the Wednesday night. And I actually, we'll talk about this at the next meeting. I think we should make an objection to that on Friday. I think that's not the right time. Okay. So we'll put this on the agenda for the next meeting and go over. When we send these to you, there are five areas. I think we all got them anyway today. But we'll tell you where the, where are they right here? Resolutions. There are five resolution areas that we'll discuss. We'll come to a conclusion.
So for new members, I will get those into the packet. And at the next meeting, you as a group have to advise Mrs. Burns and how she's to vote. But while you're down at the Cape, you can be persuaded to change your vote. Is that correct, Miss Davis?
That is correct. And just so you know, I didn't.
Independent, you are?
I was delegate for the last two years. I am so glad you volunteered to be delegate this year. You don't know what you're getting yourself into. No take backs.
She'll love it. And this is the paper we should send out. Thank you. Okay, next, future meeting dates and agenda items. October 10th, 2012, October 24th, 2012. And that will be it.
We'll be doing MCAS.
All right, MCAS.
On the 10th and on the 24th, School Improvement Plan.
Oh, I was going to ask you about that, okay. Father's favorite. All right, great.